Good evening, and welcome to the November 26, 2018 meeting of the Saginaw City Council. We begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance, and tonight it will be led by Councilmember Clint Bryant.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us today. We thank you for bringing us through this season of Thanksgiving in the city of Saginaw. Father God, we have so much to be thankful for. We ask that as the wintry roads are treacherous, that you would be with our people, be with every employee of the city of Saginaw, build up a hedge around our community and keep us safe. Father God, we ask that everything that is done from this table tonight would be decent and in order. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I remind the audience to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, and please turn off your cellphones or turn them to silence on your electronic devices. Thank you. And tonight's meeting follows the regular city council election. It is my honor to announce our two newly elected council members, Member Autumn Scherzer and Member Bill Ostash. We have two re-elected council members, Brenda Moore and Councilmember Michael Balls. All four members have taken their oath of office as required, and they are officially ready to serve the community. Therefore, I call this meeting to order, and I will proceed with the roll call. Councilmember Forbes?
Here.
Councilmember Bryant?
Present.
Councilmember Bench?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Millen?
Here.
Councilmember Balls?
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Present.
We have nine members present and zero absent. Full form. All right, our first order of business is the election of a mayor. And I'd like to remind council that you can nominate yourself, but if you are nominated, you cannot vote for yourself. You can nominate yourself, but you cannot vote for anyone. You cannot vote. With that, I will call for nominations for the position of mayor. Councilmember Millen?
I would like to place Councilman Floyd Clark in nomination for mayor.
Councilmember Clark, you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Any other nomination for mayor? Third and final call, are there any other nominations for the position of mayor? Seeing none, I will close nominations, and we will have a roll call vote. Councilmember Balls? Councilmember Bench?
Yes, Clark.
Councilmember Bryant?
Clark.
Councilmember Forbes?
Clark.
Councilmember Clark, cannot vote for yourself?
It's hard to say yes, but...
You cannot.
I can.
I didn't cross him off soon enough. Councilmember Millen?
Floyd Clark.
Councilmember Moore?
Clark.
Councilmember Ostash?
Floyd Clark.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Clark.
It is unanimous Floyd Clark is our mayor of Saginaw. So let's make it official. Oath of office. Councilmember Clark, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I support?
That I support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of?
The duties of.
The office of mayor?
The office of mayor.
In and for the city of Saginaw?
In and for the city of Saginaw.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
There you go. Now, I need you to sign here where you're accepting the appointment.
Sure.
Very good. I will now turn the meeting over to Mayor Clark.
We have the next order of business. Thank you. Well, the next order of business is electing a mayor pro tem. So at this time, we will open nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. Councilman Balls?
I'd like to nominate Brenda Moore.
Brenda Moore. Are there any other nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem?
Do you accept?
Oh, yes. Do you accept Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moore, accept. Now, are there any other nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem? Any other nominations? For the third and last time, any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem? Hearing none, we will close the nominations, and I believe you will do a roll call vote as well, Ms. Moore.
Yes, sir. Yes, mayor. Councilmember Balls?
Moore.
Councilmember Bench?
Moore.
Councilmember Bryant?
Moore.
Councilmember Forbes?
Moore.
Councilmember Millen?
Brenda Moore.
Councilmember Moore?
I give up, Moore. Moore!
Yes.
Councilmember Ostash?
Brenda Moore.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Moore.
Mayor Clark?
Brenda Moore.
We have nine votes for Brenda Moore, Mayor Pro Tem. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I support?
That I support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state?
And the Constitution of this state.
That I will faithfully perform?
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of?
The duties of.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor Pro Tem.
In and for?
In and for.
The city of Saginaw?
City of Saginaw.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I need you to sign your oath of allegiance, and then you will take a seat at the right of the mayor, which opens the seat for Autumn Scherzer.
Oh, you're taking stuff. Too much moving.
Mayor, we are at announcements.
We are ready.
Yard Waste Pickup, it will continue on your regular collection day, and it has been extended to December 7th. Also, the next regular council meeting will be next Monday, December 3rd, at 6:30 PM. Mayor, we are at public input.
Thank you at this point. Who do we have, madam?
Yes.
I will read the information for public input. We welcome your thoughts and input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so you don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk. We ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public, present, to the citizens watching on SGTV, and to the council, so we can give consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Madam Clerk, I don't believe we read the audience's participation as well earlier, so if I may?
I did announce that earlier for the election.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Our first speaker tonight is Larry Toft.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to be here this evening. I want to kind of let you know about a project that has been eight years in the making. I just, in the last few days, a book that I have written and made in Saginaw, written in Saginaw, published in the United States, has arrived. The name of the book is Downtown Saginaw: Heart of a Historic City. Before I tell you a little bit of the details of the book, and I'll make it brief, I asked four historians, did downtown Saginaw have a golden age? Oh, by the way, my name is Larry Toft, my address is 4300 El Monte Street. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and I'm talking about the book that I have written. I have been working on this book for eight years. A woman called me, and she said, "Mr. Toft, I loved your first book on remembering the past historic Saginaw township, but I have an idea for your next book." And she said, "Why don't you write a book about downtown Saginaw?" She said, "It was such a beautiful city when I was a girl in the 1930s and 40s and 50s." She said, "There's your book." Well, here it is, eight years later, and the book is being sold just in time for Christmas. This is a nonprofit book. All the proceeds from the sale of the book will go to the Historical Society of Saginaw County for the preservation of the Castle Museum. I will get nothing for this other than a great deal of pleasure of writing a book about downtown Saginaw that has so many memories for the people that lived here. It is 160 pages in length. There are over 130 historic photos in the book. I would say it would be considered to be a coffee table book with beautiful illustrations. There are 16 pages of watercolor paintings in the final section of the book. The paintings are by Elizabeth Nagel, who was the illustrator throughout the book, and Tom Hammond. The cost of the book is $40, and that includes the tax. It can be purchased at the Castle Museum. The book spans 100 years, from the lumber boom through the 1950s. And so I asked four historians if downtown Saginaw did have a golden age, and they all said absolutely. And I waited for the answer, and I said, "Well, when would that have been?" The first historian said, "Well, it had to be during the lumber boom, from the 1850s through 1900." And he explained the reasons why. Here you have a frontier town at East Saginaw, where we're standing now, is swamp and mosquitoes, and you wouldn't think that a city could rise up out of a land like this. And the second historian felt that it would have been from 1900 until 1929, when the crash of the stock market took place. But Saginaw was booming. Is that my time?
Yes, sir.
Cut. Okay.
That is the three-minute time.
Okay. So I think I got the main message out, but there are two other historians that had different views, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Chatoris Jackson. Do not see her. Let's go with Joe Loprina.
Good evening. My name is Joe Loprina. I reside at 1529 Main Street in Saginaw, Michigan. The reason I'm coming in front of the city council tonight is each of you has a ribbon that some of you did not get from the Christmas parade for me, so I wanted to make sure you got that. The reason why I'm here tonight is to talk about city council participating in other parades. The city of Saginaw has not only the Christmas parade, it has the Veteran Memorial Parade, and it has the Cinco de Mayo Parade. The Cinco de Mayo Parade's been going a lot longer than the Christmas Parade. It is almost 40-some years old. So I'm asking the city council to participate. Please, show your support to the Hispanic community, which they show you guys some support every year when it comes to election time. They always vote for you, they always have your support. So it'd be nice if you can get participated in that parade for the Cinco de Mayo this coming May, because the last person that participated in this parade, God rest his soul, Larry Calores, was the only city council member from the city of Saginaw that represented the city in the parade. So I'm asking you, please, show your faith, get out and participate in the Cinco de Mayo Parade. If you need an application, you need information, I'd be more than glad to get you the information. I know they do waive entry fees for city councils to be in the parade, so I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, and what you do for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Loprina, for your message. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we are at remarks of council.
And who do we start with today?
Councilmember Bench.
Councilman Bench.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. Thank you all for being here. First off, to Mr. Toft, very excited to hear about your book. And even though you were cut off partway through, it kind of works in your favor, because now we have to go find out what those other historians had to say, and it was a nice little cliffhanger, so now we have to, you know, purchase the book to figure out, you know, what the rest of the story was. But what a wonderful endeavor to spend your personal time on. I mean, first of all, you know, if we don't know what our history is, it's easy to forget what all is here and what all we have been, and get caught up in, you know, our problems of the day. But Saginaw certainly had many golden times, and we've gone through difficult times and transitioned into, you know, new and exciting eras. So I think that your book will probably touch on a few of those, and I'm looking forward to reading it. Mr. Loprina, thank you so much for being here. It is hard without Larry here, to be honest. We all have had to kind of step in and pick up, you know, where he left off, and sometimes we have our wonderful spouses who make signs for the parades for us, and sometimes we take it upon ourselves to do it. It's definitely difficult in a group effort, and we're definitely missing Larry when it comes to making sure that we're, you know, signed up for everything. But now that we know you have those applications available, we'll make sure that somebody reaches out to you, because I don't know about anybody else. But from the pictures I saw from the Christmas parade, everyone had a lovely time, and I know whenever I've been at the parade, I've always enjoyed it, and it's always been a good experience and a positive experience with our constituents, so we need lots of those experiences. Beyond that, I just want to say congratulations to Mr. Ostash and Ms. Scherzer, and welcome. Congratulations on your election win, and congratulations to Brenda and Michael, and thank goodness you guys are sticking around. And then double congratulations to Ms. Moore, and, well, Mayor Pro Tem Moore. I get to stay here next to her, too, so I'm happy about that. And congratulations to Mayor Clark. We're lucky that we have you in general, just on the council, but we're fortunate that we have the two of you willing to step in and serve in these positions, because it's not always an easy position to be in, and it's not all that glamorous all the time, as much as it looks like it is, I'm sure. We do appreciate your willingness to represent us and be there for us, so thank you, and that's all I have.
Councilman Bryant? All right. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back. We've had a couple weeks off, and a lot has transpired, but I do want to commend Diane Clark for her work on the parade banner. We had such a great time. It seems like regardless of what's going on, even in our personal lives, as soon as we get on that float, we just come together, and we have such a great time. And also the lighting of the lights. I wanted to send some kudos to Pride in Saginaw, Jack Nash, and Jeannie Conger for all their work. They make a lot of this stuff happen behind the scenes. Sometimes we get to show up, we get to turn on the lights, and we get to ride on a float, but there's a lot of things that go in behind the scenes, and it's just a fantastic time. If you've seen any of the photos I posted, we just had a blast. Really, that's all I have tonight. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Forbes?
Good evening. It's so nice to have a big crowd in here tonight. I just want to mimic what my colleague said about all the congrats at this table. I'm excited to serve with all of you. I also just wanted to say again, the holidays on our city was once again wonderful. It was so great to ride on the float, and I look forward to totally participating in Cinco de Mayo in May. I've done those a few times, and it's just a wonderful event as well. We're so lucky to have so many folks that are willing to put in the hard work to organize these events. And then also, I just wanted to thank all of the voters in the election. A couple weeks ago, we had great turnout, and I know that a lot of people were patient, because lines were a little longer than usual, because we didn't have straight ticket voting. So I just want to thank everyone who got out there and made their voices heard, and hopefully we'll do even better next time. So looking forward to the future. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Ostash, I get to say that for the first time. Okay. Yara?
Yeah, that's correct. First of all, right off the bat, I just want to thank everybody who supported me in the campaign and voted for me, because I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to serve with this team, and congratulations to Brenda and Floyd. I'm actually excited to work with Floyd. I've worked with Floyd on a few things in the past, preservation-wise, and that kind of leads me to Mr. Toft's book. I did have a chance to kind of look through it as well, so I'm pretty anxious to get out there and get a copy and kind of see what's in there. A preservationist myself in the city of Saginaw, so learning new things is always exciting. And to Joe, I just want to thank you for bringing that to our attention. I support it, and I would definitely like to be in the Cinco de Mayo Parade. I had a great time with the council members in the holiday Christmas parade, and like they said, it was a lot of fun. We were dressed in Victorian, so we had a little bit more layers of wool on, so we kept warm, but it was just a great time to be with everybody and just to see everybody out down the parade route that day, so.
Councilman Balls?
I really don't have a lot of comments to say today, but I would like to welcome everybody to the city council. As obvious, the city council has gotten a lot younger, considering the younger people that we got up here not saying you ain't helping us out with that, but... Appreciate you being here, brother.
We're kind of...
But on a serious note, I'd like to say something about the Big Brothers and Sisters program we've been involved in for a while, and if anybody concerned about the city of Saginaw and our youth, I would explore you to get involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program. We have a lot of kids on the waiting list, just looking for somebody to take them around and show them how to do some things around the house. In 30 years since I've been a big brother, I didn't talk to kids, I fixed a lot of bicycles, showed them how to garden, build decorated water ponds and stuff of that nature, and we've been at the library, had a couple of brothers that didn't want to do their studies, and we went to the library and we sat there for hours until he got it right. And one of my little brothers went on to the Una Vista, after going to the youth corps, and ended up being the top student of the school, the most improved student of the school. And now he's a father, 40 years old, with a seven-year-old child. So it proved that the program worked, because he didn't have any kids out of wedlock and things of that nature, so I tell you, if you're any concerned about our city, get involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program, you can help improve a young kid's life. I did want to say something about the parade. I'm sorry I couldn't join the rest of my colleagues there. Kind of happy I didn't, in a way, because I saw how cold you guys was, and I was at work, so we had important stuff to do at work, so I was feeling for y'all. But, you know, it is nice to be involved in a parade, so you guys keep up the good work, and I'll support you from the rip. Thank you.
Councilman Millen?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. To continue tonight's theme, I mostly have a list of congratulations to different people here. To Mr. Larry Toft on the publishing of your latest book, I received one of the first copies hot off the presses, and I'm very happy I have that. I wanted to personally thank you. One of your photo choices includes a photo of my dad when he was 15 years old, celebrating the end of World War II on VJ Day in downtown Saginaw.
Wow.
So I was happy to see that there. I also did enjoy the Christmas parade. Mr. Loprina, your point is well taken. I have marched before in the Cinco de Mayo Parade before I was a council member, and I think it would be nice to return to that. Being Michigan, there is at least a chance it will be warmer on the approximately 5th of May than November, but I can't guarantee that to any of the council members. And I would be remiss if I did not also say congratulations to the new mayor and the new Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
I look forward to serving with you for the next two years.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scherzer, first time for you as well. Welcome.
Thank you. I first want to say thank you to everyone who also voted for me, and especially my supporters. And you are in the room today, my family, my fraternity brothers, and my sorority sisters. I thank you. Also, congratulations to Mayor Clark and Mayor Pro Tem Moore. I am very honored to sit here at the seat, and I look forward to serving with everyone on this. First, I want to say I also participated in the Holiday in the Heart of the City Parade, and it was cold, but it's awesome to see Saginaw come out and celebrate the great things here in Saginaw, and especially during the holiday season. I want to say thank you to all the agencies here in Saginaw that participated and served Thanksgiving dinners to our community. The Savoy, Draymond Green, Friends and Family, and the Eastside Soup Kitchen, just to name a few of the agencies that participated, but without you, some people's bellies would go empty, and they would not have a fresh meal.
I also want to bring some information to the residents, to remind them that the Great Lakes Bay Health Center, Saginaw NPHC, and Bethel AME Church is sponsoring a 90-day HIV program this Friday. It is at 5:30 at SVRC 1000 Tuscola, so please come out and participate and support the community. Then last, I just want to remind everyone to, as it gets colder, please practice your fire safety and be aware of any safety hazards in your home. Safe practices equal safe residents, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scherzer. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting. It's been very gratifying to see that we have our two councilperson... Did I miss somebody? I apologize. Mayor Pro Tem Moore. It will take me a little getting used to, to say that, but I will be very happy to do so.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm sorry. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who voted for me. I didn't know we had 8,000 people in Saginaw, but we did. So I'd like to thank everybody that voted. I am truly humbled and honored to represent the city. On the 6th, on the 5th was the elec... On the 6th was the election, on the 7th, I was on a flight to LA. I represented the city of Saginaw at the National Leagues of Cities. Saginaw is now on the map. Everybody is talking about us. I had on my '989 shirt, and I also spoke in front of 2,000-plus people, talking about Saginaw. I'm like Michael, MML. On November, on November the 28th, we'll be in Saginaw. This is the first time they will be here. I'm expecting all of my colleagues to be at the Downtown Market, because if we're hosting this in Saginaw, we need to be there to represent. The council members who need to go through, now that you made it, trust me, I have learned so much in the past five years from the municipal league. As you know, I am currently the vice president of the trustee board. Next year, I will be the first African-American female to ever be the president. So Saginaw, we are on the move. We are doing things. I'm trying to connect with our city manager, connecting with all our departments, because while we can, we want to get the bang for our books. So I'm encouraging all of my colleagues to come on Thursday to the Downtown Market. It's from 6 to 9. You don't have to stay. I just need to introduce you. Staff, I would love for you to come as well, if you can. It is going to be a great celebration. We currently have about 25 to 30 people registered. They have never been here before. And when I said it, I am now the EEO president, so now that I'm the president, we might have a lot of stuff in Saginaw. But for right now, I need all of my colleagues, if you can, I need you on the 28th to be at the Downtown Market at 5:30. On Thursday, is it Thursday?
That's Thursday for the...
Next Thursday, no, this Thursday, we'll also be going to Bay City for MML training.
That's the 29th.
That's the 29th. I just want to say thank you again. I'm done.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore, thank you. Now, now...
Now you will go.
Now I legitimately go.
Now you can legit...
I do want to thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Moore, for those comments about attending the MML conference here in Saginaw, the training. It is a very important thing for us to be there, and I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Moore... It is a very important thing for us to be there, and I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Moore that we owe a duty to not only our city, but to her efforts to bring these activities from MML here. So please attend if at all possible. I want to congratulate Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem Moore on your reelection, Councilman Balls on your reelection. Thank you for both staying the course and continuing on to help the city. I also want to thank Councilwoman Scherzer and Councilman Ostache for running and for your campaign, and congratulate you on being successful in getting elected. We're happy to see the new faces and the new talent that is brought to our council. Welcome to all of you. Then thanks, I need to give thanks also to everyone here for all the council members for putting your faith and trust in me to lead the council. It is an honor and a privilege and a duty. Councilwoman Bench mentioned not always easy, and that's true. Councilwoman Moore will find that out, and I'm sure I'll find out even more, having seen all the work that our choir mayor, Dennis Browning, put in. I'm sure I'm going to find some unexpected things that I have to do as far as responsibilities, but that's fine. I appreciate the confidence you've placed in me to do a good job, and I will do everything I can to live up to that feeling of confidence that you have in me, so thank you. I do want to finally mention, Mr. La Perina, your reminder of the Cinco de Mayo Parade is a good reminder in more than one context. It is important for council members to be involved in all the kind of activities that go on in our city, starting with, as Mayor Pro Tem Moore mentioned, the MML Conference on the 28th, but also things like the neighborhood associations. Many of you are involved, but continue that, and if you haven't been, please start getting involved in the neighborhood association. Some of them are struggling. Some of them are having trouble keeping their members, some are having trouble motivation-wise. So if council members attend, I think that can give them a lot of, first of all, confidence that they're in the right course, as well as the ability perhaps to recruit more members and to become stronger. I'm sure everyone here knows our neighborhood associations have been tremendous in the progress we've made in the city so far. So I just want to remind everyone, please continue to participate in all the events, including the neighborhood associations. With that, again, my thanks, and that's all I have. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We are now at the reports from the manager.
We do have one presentation this evening, so that was requested by Councilman Bryant. Wanted to have invite Sarah Kyle to talk about 211 Northeast Michigan, so I'm going to ask her to do that first since the roads aren't great, and let her get home after she gives the presentation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Nope, welcome.
Thank you for having me. And Clint, thanks so much for bringing. This is really a reminder. We've been here in Saginaw County since 2000, there's automatically a thing in front of me, since 2013. So we want to make sure I haven't been here in front of you since 2014, so we just want to remind you what we're doing and how we work. So this was sent to everyone here. If you would like a copy, call 211, we'll get it for you. But let's talk about what it was before we came here. When people were in need, it was a bit of a mess. You would hope that you knew someone who'd been there before, or that you knew someone at an agency. I don't know where to go to pay my electric, and you would just say a prayer that you'd find the right place. Since 2013, Saginaw County has 211, one number for folks to call to get connected to services in their community. Free, confidential, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So let's talk more about what we have done here in Saginaw. First of all, this is the service area that Northeast Michigan serves, 23 counties. I do a lot of driving, but I'm thrilled to come over to Saginaw because my office is literally in Midland, but we're in Saginaw at least once a week since you're our largest population. So there's a couple ways you can access our information. You can let us do it for you. You can call us, which is the number-one way folks access our information. It's a very simple phone call by just picking up the phone and dialing 211. If you have a voice-over internet phone, you may have to make sure that your IT department has programmed 211 in, because they usually have to program anything that's not that full phone number. You can chat with us online. If you go to our website, you can find us. You can email us, and now we have texting, which has been available for one year in my region. When you let us do the searching, we're going to ask a few questions. We're doing this only to find a better referral for you. We want to make sure that we know a little bit more about you and see if we can get you just a little bit more information. So one of the programs that we have in my region that is not in the rest of the state of Michigan is we have a veteran program. So when appropriate, we ask if there's a veteran in the household, and if there is, we offer a follow-up with a veteran specialist. Our veteran specialist has had the exact same training as the county service officers, so she's very familiar with what veterans are really in need of. So you can also search for yourself. I would love it if you started at my website, but that's way too complicated. Go to 211.org. The first thing that will pop up is they'll ask you for your zip code, and then I'll take you right to my website. So I just keep pushing "go to 211.org," it's easy to remember, and you can search everything that my database has. We have a fully online database. There are, once in a while, some programs that are not available online, and that's because they may be monitored or facilitated by someone who does not want their phone number online. So if you go to search for yourself and you hit, like, a dead end, there are no services available, pick up the phone and give us a call. We may be able to find one more thing, but they just didn't want to be listed online. So let's look at your needs. There's a handout in front of you. I can run these reports literally daily, but we run them at least once a month, or once a year for every county, and we send these to actually our legislature to make sure they're aware of what the need is in your community. So you'll see the direct contacts is January through October of this year, about 8,700 contacts. Those are the direct, those are people calling us, texting us, or emailing us. Most of those are calls, like 99.9% are calls. About 8,700 folks from Saginaw are contacting 211. And again, that's 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, free and confidential. Of those folks, 11% reported that someone in their household has, is receiving disability. 7% reported that there's someone over 60 in their household, and almost 4% reported that there's a veteran in their household. The homeless question, we don't ask, because unfortunately, we don't have the same definition for homeless, but if someone tells us they don't have a place to stay that night, then we mark it as homeless. So we don't ask everyone if there's a homeless person in their household, because unfortunately, people think, well, if I have a place to sleep, I'm not homeless. That's not really the definition of homeless. So you'll see the referrals and unmet needs. The referrals are, the percentage of folks that we sent for utilities, for example, is 40, almost 45%. You can see that's your greatest need. That's not uncommon in the state of Michigan. And then unmet needs, which we'll look at next, this is when we could not find a service for someone. Unfortunately, there's not services out there to meet all the needs, especially in the entire 23 counties we serve. That doesn't mean we just said, okay, if there's no service, goodbye, have a nice day. We do ask a few more questions to see if we can find a referral. So for example, you'll see about 8% were unmet needs for utilities. We don't say goodbye, right? Is there a food pantry we can help you with? Is there a rent program that we can find for you, so that we can relieve some of those expenses, so you can put those towards utilities? Again, this report is available anytime you would like it. Please feel free to contact me. I don't give out my card because I'm the easiest person to get ahold of. Can you imagine how you would get ahold of me? Anyone?
211.
Dial 211. Right. The person picks up the phone can literally leave a message for me in our computer system, and we can get it to you. I know I'm a little bit obnoxious, right? So what can you do? So 211 is a free service. It's a service of your United Way. They pay for the service to make sure that it's here in Saginaw. Please share with us if you have any concerns. If you hear of a new program, please let us know. We're a very small agency. We can't go door-to-door to find nonprofit programs. I have some 211 material. If you're a leader in your community, you know people are coming to you and asking you for help. So throwing a tear-off pad in your car where you can say to someone here, dial 211. It is not passing the buck. We have the best customer satisfaction rates in the state of Michigan. We have the lowest speed of answer, average speed of answer, in the state of Michigan. When you tell someone to call 211 to find some of those resources, it is the best answer that you can give them. So all of this stuff is available on, you can go on our website and you can request it, or you can dial 211, and you can ask for it. I'll also leave some in the back, but it's for anyone. The same thing with posters. Make sure folks know that we're here. The more folks that use us, the better our information becomes. We don't get paid per call, that's not how it works, but we do want to make sure our information is very good. So please share our information. Whatever you do, please do not print a resource guide. And when you're sitting in meetings and they say, hey, we should put all of the food pantries on one list, say, wait a minute, food pantries change. Things change constantly. Let's use 211 because we already pay for it. Finally, I usually say I can go very quickly, because we're three digits. That's all you need to know. Do you have any questions about what we do?
Anybody? Councilman Mill?
Are all of the 211 services listed here based through the United Way programs where they are? I see some of them say they are, but are there other agencies who sponsor their 211?
So our database, just from my region, just from my 23 counties, has about 800 agencies. Some of them are sponsored or get United Way funds, but not all of them.
No, I meant the 211 authorities themselves, like you are United Way-sponsored, not all the agencies.
No.
But is each authority that is doing this?
So the way that we're funded is a little different. So the Southeast Michigan Call Center near Detroit, they're inside of a United Way, so most of their funds come from a United Way. The Kent County, which is in Grand Rapids, theirs come from a United Way. The rest of us are independent. So I'll tell you, most of my funds, because the three largest cities, four largest cities we serve, are fully United Way-funded, but in some of my northern counties, where they don't even have a United Way, their city councils, their county commissioners, we have corporate donors who make sure the service is available in their community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I would say, Councilmember Balls, if someone wanted information about Big Brothers and Big Sisters, which I am on the board of Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and it is an excellent program, you can just dial 211. We have a listing of agencies and ways to volunteer and give back to your community as well. So thank you so much for your time.
Another question?
Yes.
You're on the board of Big Brothers where? In what county?
So I am on the board for Central Michigan, which is Clare, Gladwin, Roscommon. We have about four more.
I was going to say, I didn't see it, my boy made.
No, no. But I've been a big two, and I do believe it is one of the best programs for young people.
Anything else for anybody? Okay. Ms. Kyle, thank you very much.
One more, yeah.
Oh, there is one, I missed one.
You just mentioned something very important, I think. Most of this, we think of this as called 211 for needs, but you have mentioned it's a great place to call and look to fulfill a need. Say, I have time, I have money, I have a service. Still, just call 211.
Yep, and say, I'm interested in young people. What programs do you have? I'm interested in donating couches. I'm interested in making sure that, you know, my family is donating for the holidays for toys programs. Who has those programs? And we can connect you to those programs as well. Good.
Anyone else make sure?
Just briefly, Ms. Kyle, as a council member in the city of Gladwin, we've had the chance to get to know her a little bit better through MML, some of the trainings that we've had there. So if we don't get a question asked there, don't pick up the phone, we'll see her.
Thanks again for having me.
Councilman Ostache?
Actually, just a comment. I was unaware, so this is really good, because you're right, people come up all the time, and they're asking questions, how can I help or how can I get help? So the how can I get, where can I help is the other part that I'm going to lean into. And you just made another important thing, and I'm glad people are watching this from home. Anything else, too, is, because a lot of times, students from the high schools need community service hours, and this is another opportunity for that to play a place. So I thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
And if you need any information, you just have to call. I'll come out anytime.
Anybody else? Anybody else? I do want to say thank you. I know 211's been around quite a while. I have a poster in my office that I've probably had for 10 years. That's something that everybody here or anybody who's got a contact with the public could be having one of those posters available. It's a great reminder of a great service, so thank you very much.
Thanks for having me. Thanks, ma'am.
All right, Madam Clerk? Oh, yes, Mr. Manager Morales. I got to get all my names straightened out here. I'm not used to this. Not this one.
Thank you, Sarah, for presenting to council this evening. I would also like to congratulate our two new council members and our two re-elected council members, and also Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Moore. Congratulations to all of you, especially for the two new council members. We really like to get you into our departments, so if there's anything that you would like to see our experience, police ride-along, the fire department, firehouses, snowplow ride-along is pretty popular with our council. Just contact my office, and we'll set you up. I know we do have some other council members that probably have not been through our water treatment plant, so I will probably be setting that up as a group. So those of you who are interested in that, please contact Vicki Davis in my office as well. That's one of our most important assets, because as you all know from the stories, providing clean and safe drinking water is an important part for a local unit of government, and we provide water for pretty much all of Saginaw County and part of Bay County. So it's a great asset we have there, and the plant is a great historic building as well. So we'd like to set that up sometime, and I've already talked to Kim Mason, who is our director of water and wastewater, about doing that, as well as our plant manager. So we'll get that set up as soon as you guys let us know who's interested. Also, two things I wanted to point out, that council approved both of. You should see, if you go past the front of the building, we do have our new sign in the front, and I did check with our HR, and we have been getting more job applications. One of the things we put out there is now hiring, so we've seen a little bit impact there already, and that was primarily worked on by Jeff Klopsak and Phil Carwatt, so I think they did a great job of helping to design that sign and selecting the appropriate vendor and parameters there. And then we do have a new Christmas light set up that you guys approved a few meetings ago. I think it looks great. They did a great job, and we did have a, we did set up a committee to work on that, several staff members in the city. So I thank them for participating on that committee, and I think they did a great job with decorating this year. Also, the citywide meeting is this Thursday at 5:30. This month, it is hosted in the Cathedral District at the Greenhouse Center of Hope, which is 723 Emerson Street. Again, that's 5:30 on Thursday, the 29th. As I mentioned last time, we were getting close to having the audit done. The audit is done and has been submitted to the state of Michigan and also the federal Audit Clearing House, and I think this is one of the fastest turnarounds that we've had in a long time, and I think we'll get it done even faster next year. So I have to congratulate Finance Director Lori Brown. I think that the department's done a great job with that, and the cooperative effort that they have with the auditors is outstanding. So we will be scheduling that presentation at the, I think it's the first meeting in December, so that will be next week then. So we'll have the audit presentation by our auditors, Yo and Yo, at that meeting, and we can provide council members with a paper copy or a PDF, whichever you prefer. We'll probably provide PDF first, but contact us if you want a paper copy. And finally, I think for most of the city councils in the state, Proposal 1 Passage has created the most questions, so a few of you have signed up for the MML session. I believe Mayor Pro Tem Moore could probably give more information, but I think they're also setting up a webinar through MML, which we can set up here at City Hall in one of our offices for those of you who can't make the session. But, and I know if you're talking to other cities, there are some cities that are taking action. The way that Proposal 1 is structured is different from the medical marijuana, where you have to opt out of allowing dispensaries, medical marijuana, you had to opt in. So some cities have already opted out, I believe. Some have changed their zoning already, but it's not something that needs to be done immediately. They have, I believe, a year from the certification of the election to make the rules for dispensaries. So primarily, the initial change that will happen just after certification is laws to do with possession and growth, so that's primarily through the police department. Chief Ruth has already updated those issues with the police officers, so that action has already taken place. already taken place. We've also, our city attorney, Chief Ruth, police chief, and also John Stempel for planning and zoning, has been attending these sessions far in advance of the proposal passing. So they have a lot of information about what needs to be done. So we'll be, any specific questions you have, just send them to me, and I'll get them to the appropriate personnel. If we need to have any special meeting to review with those individuals, we'll set that up as well. With that, that concludes the management update.
Mr. Manager, with three new members on council, and it's always good to refresh everybody, is there some plans for orientation for council members?
Orientation has been held with the new council persons.
Maybe orientation's not the right words. Informational update for all the council members as a manager's report for some of the operations and activities that we have, the issues of everything from unfunded liabilities all the way through to the Open Meetings Act, limitations and requirements and so forth.
So a lot of the procedural issues, we'll be giving updates to all of council, so everyone will get a copy of issues regarding to Open Meetings Act and probably FOIA and some of those issues. We'll have an opportunity to talk about OPEB and other unfunded liabilities when we look at the audit next week. We've always offered that any council member, typically the new members do set up a meeting with me, so we could, as their schedule allows, they can schedule something with me, and we could talk about any of the issues that, general issues in the city that they'd like, and also any other department they'd like to see, as I mentioned. I know when Councilman Milne was appointed, I think he went to about every department in the city for tours, so that's always available. If there's something specific that any council members would like a presentation or report to council on, just let me know what the topic is, and we can get you that information and do a presentation if that's the preference.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilman Balls.
Yes, Mr. Manager, as far as Proposition One is concerned, how do we, I'd like to know more information on how do we give our licenses to growers and distributors and things of that nature. How can I get the information?
If you're looking to, if council as a whole is looking to pass an ordinance that would allow for recreational marijuana facilities to be within its jurisdiction, we would have to probably look at the zoning ordinance as well as the business licensing ordinance and make amendments and changes within that ordinance. But most of the regulation and the licensing is going to come from the state.
Okay. So the people, I understand there may be a facility opening up in my neighborhood, big place, and I feel like they may be growing it there, I guess, and so they get that license from the state?
Well, right now, no facilities can operate medical or recreational within the city of Saginaw. And nothing, we do not currently have an ordinance that would allow for medical marijuana facilities, and that's been on, that law's been on the books for a couple of years now. As far as the recreational goes, the state has a year to put the rules and regulations that are going to be the structure of that in place, and they'll start taking applications shortly after that time and reviewing the licensing. Right now, the way it's structured, they're going to be issuing licenses first to certain facilities that are already operating in the medical marijuana area, and we don't have any of those within our jurisdiction. So depending on the type of facility, even if we opted in, certain developers might not be able to obtain those licenses.
Good. Any other questions for the manager?
I think maybe during our in-service we do, you think we can have, we can talk a little bit more about that when we get together? Is it in January?
Yes.
In January?
About Proposal One? About Proposal One?
About Proposal One?
Yeah, we can, we can.
I mean, we're there for a whole day, so if we just took an hour, hour and a half, and talked about it, that might be good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
One more thing, too, kind of goes to Amy Lust, the attorney. I had done some reading on this as well, and we were talking about what Councilman Balls was talking about, too, and I had heard that it was going to be, it's going to be kind of a process that the state's going to go through, and it could be even as late as 2020, is what I'm hearing. People could be licensing, operating.
Before people are operating? That wouldn't surprise me. The state, by the language of Proposal One, has to have the regulations in place and be taking applications within the next year.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Manager.
Mayor, you are now at the consent agenda.
We need a motion, first of all, the agenda has been available at City Hall on the city website and on SGTV channel 191. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions. Both. All right, vote is moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, pass.
Our next order of business is boards, commission, committee reports.
Are there any reports from city boards or commission representatives here at council? Any reports?
I am currently on a board, on a commission, so I can give a little report there, too.
Which one?
Historic District Commission. So currently, I'm still sitting on the Historic District Commission. I did attend the meeting this month, too, and was kind of happy to report that some of the buildings down in Old Town, some applications came before the commission for approval, and there's some facade restorations, like the Old Comedy Club, which is now the martial arts, and then the county sheriff's office is there, too, and then there was some work that's being done behind the Emmerich Building, kind of where the new bread guy is at. So it was kind of exciting to see that.
Good.
Some movement down there.
Any other reports? Madam Clerk?
Our next order of business is resolutions. Our first one tonight is the authorization to change to the standard street lighting contract and bill of sale with Consumers Energy Company in the amount of $1.
Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
There's a motion in support. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. All right, Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution is the creation of Saginaw Water System Advisory Council.
Again, we need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to know, what good is that going to do for the city of Saginaw? Why we haven't had one?
Well, we have to have one because of the new lead and copper rules the state issued. They require, for a municipality like Saginaw size and the water we supply, they're requiring that you have this advisory board.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Carrie. Madam Clerk?
We are now at Ms. Leeny's business.
Is there any, are there any other motions or business to come before council? Any other motions? Any other business? Hearing none, entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Thank you.